Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The March State Board Work Session will now come to order. Denise, please call roll.
Lisa Fricki?
Here.
Patsy Coad-Johns?
Here.
Debra Neary?
Here.
Robin Stevens?
Here.
Rachel Wise?
Here.
John Wetzel?
Here.
Patricia Tim?
Yes.
Maureen Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Blumstedt?
Here.
Thank you, Denise. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room, on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you're done speaking. And please, turn off your cell phones now. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the Commissioners' Report and Consent Agenda process.
Yeah, so first, just as part of routine, you have the pink form. If there's anything on the consent agenda that you would like removed for a separate vote, or if you need additional information, please let us know. But fill out that pink form and put it in front of Scott there, and that will take care of that side of the equation. The report on rules, you have that attached in here. There's two rules still pending approval by the Attorney General's Office, Rules 91 and 92, and I just got a little bit of an update. I believe they're kind of in the process being looked at. So Leslie Donnelly actually is the one that looks at those. So that's in the process, and we'll see what that feedback is, well, hopefully pretty soon, so. Other than that, Ryan, did you have anything you weren't going to come up for? So we just got really efficient all of a sudden. There's a few items, actually some presentations coming up. I'll just kind of highlight, I think, four of them, and kind of put it in context for you a little bit. First of all, we're going to have Don come up and present on Rule 10 history. This is part of our trying to inform the full board about some of the background information around Rule 10 and that particular direction. We'll have some conversations. Shane's going to come up in a little while on special ed funding and maintenance of effort to give you a little more background, follow-up from our last meeting. Dean's going to be here to talk a little bit about data collection process, and Jeremy's here to talk about the assessment data timeline, or assessment timeline, I'll call it maybe better. But I'll bring Don on up for his, I'm just going to say, great presentation. You know, I don't want to oversell early, but I've seen Don give this historical perspective before, and I think it'll be really good information as we start working on Rule 10 for the full board to hear. So, Don, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Blumstedt. So, good afternoon. My name is Don Losky, and I am the Accreditation Section Director in the Office of Accountability, Accreditation, and Program Approval. And I'm here today to speak to you about Rule 10, and the rule that provides regulations and procedures for the accreditation of schools, and then also talk about the history behind accreditation in Nebraska and Nebraska schools. This research came about as part of our Rule 10 revision that is currently, that we have opened right now. And so I always like to go back and look at the historical pieces to see where were we in the past? How did we get from there to here? And so I found it very interesting going through all of the information that was left in the Accreditation Office, and put together a document that's been handed out to you, which is a chronological order of rules, regulations, laws, manuals, everything you can think of. So I'm going to kind of start in the middle of this document and kind of walk you through where we, how we got from our current Rule 10 to where we are now, and then talk a little bit about historical before that, and where have we been since 2015, which is the last time that Rule 10 was opened and authorized, was August 1st of 2015. So, back 30 years ago, in 1989, the State Board had repealed Rule 14 and 15 and created what is now called Rule 10. And this is what it looks like, okay? The difference between the Rule 10 that we have currently and the Rule 10 that was happening in 1989 is that it both accredited, did accreditation and approval of public schools and non-public schools, which ours does now too. But public schools had the option to be just approved. They could be approved, or they could seek accreditation. So that's probably the biggest difference with the 1989 where we were. Then, between 1989 and 2015, we've had 18 revisions where we've opened up Rule 10, made changes to it, and then now we're to the 2015. And so we are in the process of the 19th revision of our current Rule 10. So, in that timeframe also, non-public schools had, Rule 14 became the rule that guided approval for Rule 14 schools. So, there was a timeframe. One of the revisions, and one of those 18 revisions, was to remove non-publics from Rule 10, give them their own rule as approved, and stating that all public schools would now be accredited. With rural school, with non-public schools, if they want to be accredited, they certainly can apply for a Rule 10 accreditation, but they have to be approved as a non-public school. So there was a split in there from the very beginning of Rule 10, where it started out being accredited and approval process, and then it's now divided out. So what we currently have, Rule 10 accredits our public schools and non-public schools that wish to be accredited. Rule 14 is for approval. So there's kind of two different terms there that you will see as I talk about some of the history too that come into play also. So, I've gone over 30 years really quickly. Now, I'm going to go back 150 years. Back to Nebraska had been a state for two years. So, in 1869, Nebraska became a state in 1867. The Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction was created. And there was a joint accreditation between the University of Nebraska and the Department of Public Education. It was the University of Nebraska that was accrediting high schools with, in conjunction with the Department of Public Instruction at that time. And so it was driven by the University of Nebraska. And it remained that way until 1940, when the university chose to remove themselves from the accreditation process, and it was all taken over by the Nebraska Department of Education. So from 1869 until 1940, it was a joint process between the university and the Department of Ed. It got to the point at one time where the university was accrediting schools that wanted to be accredited, and the Department of Ed was accrediting schools that wanted to be approved. And then it moved to where the department was doing it all from 1940. So, I was calling that the early years, and that's because that's kind of letting you know where we kind of started back in 1869, 150 years ago. And most of accreditation, I shouldn't say most, all was with high schools. There was not with elementary at that time. Also, in 1896, Nebraska became a member of NCA, which is now Advanced Ed. And so NCA was providing accreditation for high schools, along with working with the Department of Ed. Then the development years were 1949 to 1974, where in 1949, there was an establishment of accrediting elementary and secondary schools, both public and private. And also, the Commissioner authorized to appoint an accreditation committee. So, we have a state accreditation committee that has been functional since 1949, which was quite a long time ago. And so, and the Commissioner, that is his committee to bounce ideas off, get feedback, support, and so forth. So that's been since 1949. Then, in 1952, there was a constitutional amendment, so there was a vote, to establish the State Department of Education and the Commissioner of Education, and the creation of a State Board of Education. So 1952 is when your function became alive, active by act of the voters. It was a vote to have this created, have it as a constitutional amendment. Then, from 1975 to the present, I call it our regulations and procedures. So, from 1975, Rule 14, Regulations Procedures for Approval of Continued Legal Operation of All Schools and Opening of New Schools happened, and that's the Rule 14 that we are using now for non-public schools. In '79, Rule 11 was Regulations and Procedures for the Accreditation of Public and Non-Public Schools. In 1983, there was Rule 15. And then in 1989, they repealed 14 and 15 and merged into 10. That's the year that Rule 10 became born and became the document that is guiding education in here. I wanted to give you just a few, I'm watching my time too. There's just some different things that have happened over the time that I kind of want to highlight as part of this when you go through this document here, is that there's been, over the years, different levels of accreditation that have been tried. Currently, we do not have any level system in our accreditation. Either you're accredited or you're not accredited. And so in 1884, schools were major accredited or minor accredited. In 1918, they were accredited A, B, C, and junior accredited. In 1926, they were an approved high school, a minor accredited, accredited, or NCA accredited high school. And then in 1951, they were an A, double A, or a triple A. And then in '52, they removed the triple A, and they were either an A or a double A. So, there has been lots of different examples of trying to do accreditation on a tiered level. I cannot tell you why that changed, or what was the rationale behind that, but I'm just saying that that has been a conversation, a common theme through all of this. Another one that I think you might find interesting is that in 1999, Rules 1, 2, 3, and 4 were adopted, and those were our content standards. Rule 1 was our English, Language Arts, we had math, science, and social studies, and they were separate rules. Then, in 2002, Rules 1, 2, 3, and 4 were repealed, and the standards were included in Rule 10. So that was one of the revisions, was to move the standards, and that's where they are currently, is they are housed in Rule 10. That's why this book is so thick, because it's got all of the standards in it. Then, in 2000, Teacher Evaluation, which was Rule 34, and Multicultural Education, which was Rule 16, were rolled into Rule 10. So you can see Rule 10 seems to be the rule that continues to grow as we, as different issues come up, and different thinking, and so forth. And so, we've had Teacher Evaluation, which was a separate rule, and Multicultural, which was a separate rule, and they put them all into Rule 10, and that's where they currently are. So, one fun fact that I think that I found in this was that in 1986, Joe Lucha Harms, the Commissioner, gave a report to the State Board of Education, which he gave a report on schools not complying with mandatory requirements of Rule 14, that would be our non-publics. We still have a few schools that maybe we have some of those issues with. Schools that continue to employ non-certificated teachers, we certainly still are dealing with that, for public, for public, non-public, accredited and approved. This one, schools that have failed to comply with the regulation that by July 1, 1986, each elementary school shall have a lavatory, drinking fountain, restroom, and toilet located inside the school building. They may use a travel trailer, a motorhomes, water system, and a toilet. And so, I think we've come a ways from 1986 as far as what we are addressing with public education in Nebraska. That's what I have, Dr. Blumstedt.
Well, and I, too, really a big compliment, he's going through this really quickly. He did, Don did a great exercise with the Advisory Committee, where folks kind of would dive into this a little bit deeper and have some conversations. But there are some themes that I think we've even talked about, like levels of accreditation, and the types of things, whether standards fit in Rule 10 or not. But I, you know, it's what I told Don when he started showing me. I said, "So all my good ideas have been thought of before," is what we came across. But I think that historical context is really also important. So, I mean, I'd open it up certainly if, Don, if you're willing to share any other thoughts about the kind of other things maybe we heard from that, from that meeting. I think it was in January with the Accreditation Committee.
At the State Committee meeting, we were talking about, we did have some activities with them, actually looking into this, and asking for their highlights and that type of stuff. But then we moved into the actual rule revision. And we wanted them to have that same information before we started having the conversation about where do we go from now? What is the Rule 10 going to look like in the future? We know what it looked like in the past, but what's it going to look like in the future? And so we started bringing up some of the suggestions or ideas, we call them the big ideas from your retreat that you had, and started bringing those up. And with some agreement with some, but some pushback on some other ones. But what it made me understand is that it's hard to give an opinion that may be positive without really knowing what you're talking about. When we talk about a leveled layer of accreditation, well, that kind of scares them, because they don't know what that, what does that mean? And we're not sure what that means. And so, it was good feedback from them, but it helped me to understand, we need to really be kind of putting out there, what are we thinking? Same thing with the standards. Do, you know, is it best to have them in there, or is it best to have them? And if we don't have them in there, what do we have them in? Is there, can they just be standards by themselves, or do they have to be put back into another rule? And so it probably raised more questions than anything, but I think it also gave us good insight to maybe some of the pushback or reflections that we will, or support that we may have as we move forward on this.
I had a question.
When we talk about non-public schools, where do homeschools fit in?
Well, that's Rule 13.
That's Rule 13.
Yeah, that's a separate.
And that's totally separate.
Yep.
Okay, because I was thinking about non-certified teachers.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Thank you, Don, for this fascinating.
It is.
It really is very fascinating. And just kind of perusing through it, I know there was a couple of things I saw where it talked about basically schools would be accredited unless they had like a violation or, you know, and it'd be interesting to think about, well, what did that really mean? And what, you know, how did that happen, you know, and what was considered a violation that triggered, you're not going to be accredited? So, one of the challenges I have is that it's, you know, you're kind of either accredited or you're not, but actually we have everybody accredited. You know, so it's kind of like, what, how do we differentiate in some capacity? And it looks like we've been struggling with this since 1869. This is not a new struggle, is one of my takeaways from this analysis. And I'm a big believer, if somebody else has some good ideas, let's take a look at it. Have we looked at some other states and have any summary that could be shared with? What are, what are some things other states are doing that are very different? And what does that look like? Is there some novel things happening in other states? Not necessarily to say this is where we need to go, but food for thought. What are some things, in particularly in two buckets? Well, maybe three buckets. Approval, accreditation, and then the accountability bucket. You know, what are some things? I think we've moved into a process where approval and accreditation are almost so merged that we are putting a lot of things in Rule 10 that are maybe more approval checklist kinds of things. And so, I just feel like it'd be interesting to know, what are some models out there with those three elements, the approval, the accountability, and the accreditation, that look different, or that look promising, or that are novel? Just for discussion, it'd be good to have that information.
Okay.
Lisa?
Got it. I was fascinated that the, that group that you met with, I can't remember what you called it.
The Comit, the Committee?
The Committee, yes. And I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but as a board member, I would like to see some of their key questions or comments. Is that possible in a fact sheet? I mean, that would, because the minute you talked about level of accreditation, I was thinking 1 and 2, and there was an explanation for that, and some things that would go with that in the discussion. So, I'd like to hear feedback, because I look at those people as stakeholders.
Yes.
And that helps us with decision-making. Is that going to be okay?
Yeah, in fact, I think a big part of this, and we were kind of doing this general discussion, but we'll be bringing some of that information to the strategic planning and, oh no, I just lost it, performance.
Committee.
Yeah, I think, spy. I had spy. Improvement Committee. To that committee, actually, as they, as they do that work. Because there is, we are using that group to gather additional information and kind of set some context as we dive into Rule 10, and that's been really helpful.
And we'll be meeting again in May.
Yeah.
I, this, I mean, this is a copy, but this is how thick the 1989 Rule 10 was, and this is the current one.
That's what I have.
Yeah. So, you're right when you ask what were, what regulations, what did schools have to do to be accredited? It's not as in-depth as current.
One quick question. Don, can you, and if you can answer this, that's fine, but I was just curious, why, I think you said in the late 1990s, were the standards put into Rule?
I do not know. Do you know?
Well, I mean, my sense of it at that time, so the state had not adopted, adopted standards in the same way where they were mandatory standards. Rachel probably has some good, Rachel has history. Lots of people have history, probably. But at that point, as it was starting to move, move forward, I, to enforce things, Rule 10 is the strongest enforcement that we tend to have, because schools have to be accredited after, whenever a year, after 89, I think. Public schools have to be accredited. So it was the most forceful rule that we have at the State Board level for the department level, and I think that's why they got layered into that. But I'm sure there's a lot of other details, so.
I'd like to close with one short paragraph from an article that was written back in 1983 by, let me see, that was written by Merlin Meinoff? He was the Director of Approval and Accreditation, and Sharon Meyer, and I'm sure everybody remembers Sharon. But they did an article for a magazine called The Structure of Education in Nebraska. But their last paragraph, when in 1983, is just as appropriate as it is now in this year. "Nebraska's educational structure, like any complex human organization, requires continuous study and occasional change to fit new and emerging needs of our society. However, Nebraskans should take pride in an educational structure that has provided consistently high-quality educational opportunities for the youth of our state." So even back then, I mean, I think that kind of, those two things have been what have led all of our work with Rule 10, is it centers around what's best for kids, but then it also needs to be open enough to take in changes in society and changes in education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, this should be a good opportunity for me to put to bed the rumor that Don used me as an eyewitness account to 1869.
So, thank you, Don, very much. So I'll go ahead and have Shane come up for item 2.5, a little discussion and presentation on, it looks like he has co-conspirators days.
Good afternoon. Shane Ryan, Budget and Operations Officer, and I've got Greg Prohaska with me from Special Education Finance. If Don's presentation was great, mine will be brief. Last month, there was a question during Amy and Greg's presentation about some information on special education funding. So, worked with Greg to put some information together for you on funding for special education in Nebraska public schools. There are two main types of special education programs in our public schools. There are programs for those children who are below age 5, and those are funded predominantly out of local property tax funds, and federal grant funds from the Individual with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. There are, there's also a school age program, which is funded out of those same two buckets, but then the state has about a quarter of a billion dollars that is appropriated for special education funding as well. The rules and regulations around special education funding are the Individuals with Disability Education Act, and then the Uniform Grants Guidance. Within those, there is a maintenance of effort requirement for not only school districts, but also for the state. This is something that's common among grant, federal grant funds across all different federal agencies, but is predominantly in IDEA in our education setting in the K-12 area. Maintenance of effort is measured at the state level with a combination of how much the state appropriates and spends for special education, and then the combination of all local effort at the school district level. School districts are then measured at their level as well, and if they don't spend as much funds in the current year as they did in the previous year, there are some tests to see why that maintenance of effort was met and some possible exceptions. Those basically revolve around the number of special education students, or exceptions for the level of service those students require. So if you had a student that had considerable amount of expenditures related to them leave your school district, it would be expected that you would spend less the following year. And with that being documented, then that's an acceptable exception for not maintaining your level of effort. This is reviewed annually by the special education staff, and the past year, we had about 10% of our school districts who did not meet maintenance of effort. And so, as a result of that, we're withholding that maintenance of effort penalty from their state reimbursement on their school age program, and we'll remit that back to the U.S. Department of Education as part of that maintenance of effort process. As far as state rules go, we have multiple rules around special education, but the primary rule revolving around reimbursement for our school age programs is Rule 51. I focus on school age programs with the state reimbursement, because currently, we do not reimburse for any early childhood education with special education funds in the below-age-five area. So, a school district's only receive money from the Department of Education for K through 12 special education programs. Whenever we give presentations to sped directors or superintendents around special education funding, we always point out to them that the best way to maximize the available resources for them is to use as much of their federal IDEA funds for their below-age-five programs as possible, and not spend those federal grant funds on the school age program, because those expenditures that are reimbursed with federal funds are excluded from the state program. So, some context. 1718 is the most recent school year we have a complete picture of special education funding. It was $534 million across all age groups. About 13% of that was federal funds out of IDEA, 67 and 1/2 million. 42% of that was state funds, 226.4 million, and 45% was local property tax funds, 240 million. So, school districts are paying the largest share of the special education programs out there right now, today. If we look at some historical trends, back in 2013, 14, we had a total special education expenditures of $427 million. 67 million was out of federal funds, 212 million was out of state funds, and 148 million was out of local funds. Fast forward to the 1718 year, we had the total of almost $534 million. 67 million in federal funds, we're up to 226 million for state funds, but the local district funds have increased almost $100 million. Their share is now up to $240 million. There is LB 346 that's currently in the legislature right now, that would add additional funding for the school age programs and guarantee a certain level of reimbursement relative to their expenditures. LB 346 would fix the reimbursement rate for the 1819 and 1920 school year at 60%, the next two years at 70%, and then from '22, '23, and beyond, at 80%. Some historical perspective, as the special education costs have gone up extensively, and relatively small increases in the state appropriations, we've seen what we are able to reimburse drop from 57% down to a projected 49% for this most recent school year. The way the reimbursement program works is the legislature appropriates a certain amount of money. We collect the special education expenditures in the final financial reports and review those. We collect the special education expenditures in the final financial reports and review those for allowable expenditures and then pay them out on a proportional basis. So everyone shares equitably in the amount of reimbursement based on their costs. But as you can see from the historical trend, local school districts are having to dedicate an ever-increasing portion of their budgets to special education. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Yes?
Thank you so much for this information. It's really, really valuable. And you might have shared it and I missed it, so I just want to go back to the birth to five.
Yes.
What percentage of federal funds is birth to five?
So birth to five is, I don't have that exact percentage, but it is almost half of the special education programs. So school districts, if they're doing a good job, will utilize as much of their federal funds as they can for those below age five programs. IDEA dollars can be used, most of the IDEA dollars can be used for any age group. There is a portion that is reserved for preschool education, three and four-year-olds. But the enrollment poverty in the base IDEA funds can be used for any age group from birth to age 21. So they have a lot of flexibility there.
Yeah, if we have any information of, you know, like a average across the state, it'd be interesting to know on the birth to five, the percentage local districts are spending versus the IDEA since the state is not supporting, because Nebraska's been a leader in being birth to five
Yes.
versus 3 to 21, which I think is great. And I think that's the right thing to do. Yet I think it's important that we make sure people understand, though it's the right thing to do, the state is not investing
Yes.
in birth to five. And I think I've got that correct.
Yes.
That the state has not made a commitment or investment in birth to five in special education. And I think that is a really important data point that we need to share and that we need to make sure people understand because birth to five is so critical in that early intervention. Yet it's only a local and federal investment in birth to five. And so if we care about early childhood in the state, which we often talk about early childhood, we need to create a voice of support for early childhood and special education for state funding to support at least a percentage of birth to five from state funding for those children that are identified with needs from birth to five.
I'd like to add that with a statewide percentage of IDEA funds going to birth age five, whatever that percentage is, it wouldn't apply to every district because IDEA funds are allocated to districts based on their total school membership and some other factors also in poverty. So there's a lot of, lot of smaller districts that get more IDEA funds than that, than their whole below age five special ed program costs. So then, again, like Shane says, it encouraged to use IDEA funds first for that and then they could use the additional for school aids costs. But then, on the other end of the spectrum, there's larger schools that their below age five programs are way larger than the amount of IDEA funds they get, so.
Right. And, and I think that's a really good point. And I think that's why if we can have that information in a way that advocates, I think all the information shared is really valuable. But that birth to five piece is a really important piece because if I'm sitting there in a school district and whether I use IDEA, school age, or birth to five, either way, I'm going to have a limitation in what comes to me from the state for my school age because they're not going to meet, I mean, it's a decreasing percentage from school age. And I think that picture we should make sure we paint and advocate for is that it's a decreasing investment at the state level for school age and there's a zero investment at the state level for birth to five. And that, I think, people can understand. I don't know that a lot of times people understand the, the challenges that local school districts are facing around providing high-quality special education services, birth to 21. And that challenge is that the state has not met its, in my view, obligation for school age. And it has made no investment, birth to five. And that's, I think, an important conversation that we, as board members, should help carry forward.
Lisa?
The maintenance of effort, I think I've got that down. And I just want to make sure, that's the state determination, maintenance of effort?
So the federal IDEA law requires that both the state and local school districts spend as much in the current year as they did in the previous year.
Right.
So that is generally very easy for the state to meet because that looks at both the, the state appropriation, which has gone up 1% to 2% annually, and the costs of the local school districts have gone up considerably. There are some school districts who wind up not meeting that maintenance of effort level when you look at what they spent with their local funds and what they received from the state as well. And after we review that annually and make a determination whether or not they fit the exception of having fewer students or having students with fewer needs, if they don't meet either of those exception criteria, then yes, there is a penalty that is leveled based on federal regulations that we collect out of their school age reimbursement of state funds.
And my concern, I guess, and the question that I really wanted to know is I could see in a school, in my mind as a teacher, where students make great leaps in their educational, education, and they're doing better and maybe are going more into the classroom and not needing special services anymore. And so when you're talking about maintenance of effort, that lowers the cost. And I don't want them to be penalized because they're doing a great job. How do we address that? Or do we? I don't know.
I'll defer to Greg on this one.
Currently, that, that.
That's such an easy question, I'm going to let them answer.
I mean, I, I can see that potentially happening. We have great special ed teachers, regular teachers that co-teach with special ed teachers. And kids are making leaps and bounds in certain areas at different grade levels. And if that causes less money to go into the school and then they're penalized, then I, help me understand.
Well, your, your example, yeah, that's a tough one because the federal exceptions would not allow for that to be an exception unless it was over a certain threshold of a dollar amount for a kid, which would be, we use the statewide average for people costs, which is like 11, $12,000. So if it exceeded that, it could be an exception. But otherwise, that isn't an allowable exception per the federal.
Maybe that's not a scenario that would happen, but I, I just can imagine there are great things happening out there, so.
There's just year-to-year changes with services, pretty much isn't an exception. It's per federal regulations.
Well, thank you for tackling that one.
And I do think you bring up a good point, and that interfaces with MTSS. It also started some of this conversation. As we do those kinds of things, there is a potential risk that schools have in, in this process. And I think it's, one of the challenges we have is to ensure that we have a responsibility that we are articulating to our lawmakers at the federal level what we want to see changed in, in maintenance of effort that does not penalize in particularly small rural schools. That's where I think the risk is greater because, you know, there are smaller numbers. There are some other factors that come into play. So I think for us, that becomes a part of our responsibility to try to lead with recommended change at the federal level, in particularly if IDEA is coming up down the near future of, of reauthorization because it's a maintenance of effort IDEA issue, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think the difference between your two examples is that your example, the student is still identified as special ed. And in your example, you would probably have a student that isn't identified as, as special ed anymore. And then you would have a, an exception for a per capita amount of expenditures for maintenance of effort. So there's, there would be an adjustment allowable for that situation.
Just to follow up on what I've heard Rachel and Lisa ask you. This isn't an unusual question that comes from superintendents, but they say, I'm trying to keep costs down and then I get penalized for it, which is not meeting maintenance of effort. And I was going to ask you for, for how I should respond to them. So if I'm not mistaken, I'm just going to say, that's a tough one.
Well, certainly, it, it's a tough balancing act when you're looking at the level of service and the level of cost to provide that service. And so, yeah, it, it does put a, a school administrator in a difficult position.
It's, yeah, efficiency isn't an exception in the Fed's mind. I'm not going to say I agree with that either, but it's, I think it's unfortunate because we expect schools to be good stewards of the funds and stuff. If, what I would say is if a school district is contemplating some of those situations, especially when it's dealing with contracting with different agencies and stuff, to contact us, because there's some, some situations if, if the contracting agencies decline to provide services and stuff, there's, there's some exceptions that could happen because of that. So if, I'd say, yeah, if you know of anybody who's, and we, and we tell districts that too, that we can talk about those situations and see if there's a way to do that where it does fall under an exception category.
And I joined because I was having a little bit of a panic attack back there. But I was going to say what Greg just said. Please tell them to contact us. I think more times than not, superintendents or even business managers feel like they need to make that decision in isolation. But it is our job to help them to figure those pieces out. There's so many other expenditures that could be happening, specifically in how are they providing early intervention? What service providers are they using to provide early intervention? So that if those students who are no longer qualifying for special education are receiving services to keep them at that level, again, it's maintaining whatever level they are needing to be at, not only fiscally, but at an education rate, who's providing that? What costs are those being covered under in a federal IDEA or state-level funding component? And those are all pieces that we can help them figure out. When sometimes they see it's this pot or this pot, and this is how we've always done it, well, let's be creative and let's think about how these things can be worked out instead of falling strictly to, oh, I'm not going to make maintenance of effort. We spend hours and hours working with districts and we want to continue to help them do that.
Yeah, I would just kind of thank all, everyone for, I mean, the, the reality is, and I'm glad Amy came up to say that because we've put tools out there for them to look at on, and different ways to do it. But I think primarily, especially for all of you, if you hear those concerns, certainly send, send folks our way. I don't, except for Robin, I don't expect the rest of you to be able to explain it at all. But no, I mean, it's really what we do, so. So I gotta, I just gotta say one thing. This is Shane's last board meeting. In front of us, as you all know, Shane's leaving us for, for pastures on the eastern side. He's going off, home out of public schools.
Still part of the education system.
Yeah, and we're really, you know, proud of what Shane's accomplished at the agency and been part of, part of that important work that we've done over the, I mean, especially over the last year. I mean, the, the changes that we've made and, and I, I know we'll miss him, but I thought I'd better give you that chance to say, say that now because this is your last shot at him, is what I'm telling you.
Thank you very much.
Shane, before you leave, I have one question for you to make.
Yes.
If the board wanted access to the slides you just presented, where could we obtain those?
So you have a PDF attached to the agenda in Spark, but I can certainly share a copy of the PowerPoint presentation with Ryan.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, mine was, yeah, it was, it was the circle of death on that thing.
Shane, I want to thank you for teaching me all of the finance acronyms. I'll be forever grateful.
Thank you.
So thanks. Thanks to everyone. So next on the agenda is Dean, Dr. Fulkers, gets to come up and share a little bit about where, well, a combination of history and vision, I think, probably, right?
And I'll add in the brief. So greetings. I am Dean Fulkers. I serve as the Information Systems Officer here at the Department of Education. And with me is Dr. Matt Hastings, who is the Senior Administrator of the Data Research and Evaluation Team. The commissioner had indicated that, I think, last month or over the past couple of months, there's been some inquiries and some discussions, as well as some new board members that maybe don't have the full, complete context of all of the things that are happening in the world of data collection. And so what we thought we would do is share with you a little bit about where we've been, where we're going, and where we are in this space of data collection. So it is a compendium of history and future as a part of that work. So in the spirit of statutory authority, there's a number of these references. I should say, once Spark gets back up, this is available in Spark as far as a PDF document. So we can make sure that that is a part of this. So, but ultimately, there's a whole bunch of authorities that are in existence about the, and expectation as well as the authority to collect data in a variety of different formats. And, and there are some general overarching goals and drivers that we adhere to and, and follow as a part of our belief and philosophy here at the department. First and foremost, the privacy and security of student data is number one. You might have heard the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, affectionately known as FERPA. The, that sort of helps provide a frame around it, but it's a minimum. It's a minimum expectation. And so we take very seriously the importance of, of the privacy and, and security of the, of the, of the data. We also subscribe to this notion of when possible, let's collect it once and use it often and so that we reduce the burden on districts, reduce the burden on our stakeholders as a part of this work. But quite honestly, it reduces the burden on our staff when we can achieve that as well because now we've got, and we don't have multiple places where the data is, is residing. We also believe that quality data leads to quality information. And that's sometimes not always the case. And so we continue to aspire to find ways and mechanisms to help districts and help our staff achieve that goal. Efficiency and coordination, and we'll talk a little bit more about that here in some of the transformational pieces that we've been doing over the past several years around that efficiency and the coordination. We've also termed this, this notion of source of truth. Instead of having multiple sources of potential answers, we work really hard at creating a perception and a practice that there's a single source of truth that we want to go to, that where, and where does that particularly truth reside? And finally, that, you know, data and its base component are ones and zeros that all make up things. And ultimately, unless it's used effectively, it's really just that. And so what we've really tried to do over the past couple of years, especially under the leadership of Matt and his team and staff, have been working really hard to figure out better, more effective and efficient ways to use the data as a tool for the, the schools and the community. So here's the, the other part of the history. Before 2007, we were primarily a paper-based collection place. You may have heard stories about the Wall of Shame. So the commissioner at that time had everyone who sent out a form to a school bring that paper form and they taped it on a wall. And it actually filled up both sides of the walls, top to bottom, all across, right behind the commissioner's office. And they called that the Wall of Shame. And so they would have people walk through that wall and recognize that this is the amount of questions and burden we were providing to our school districts on an annual basis. So it was that stimulus, in addition to the, the need for us to be more efficient, that we moved into a different realm. And so with the help of a federal grant in 2007, And so with the help of a federal grant in 2007, we were able to implement a unique ID system and also essentially collect data at an individual student level that helped us get to that collect once and use in multiple ways. It also helped to move forward the whole sort of digital collection of data as a part of our work. So jump ahead about five years, the implementation and the use of that Nebraska Student and Staff Record System, NSSRS, or NISER sometimes, as you might have affectionately heard it called, we received another investment of federal resources to help us modernize some things in 2012. And so it was about the same time that there was this Education Data Systems Study that occurred, and it was the Legislative Resolution 264. And I want to share just a little bit about that for those that don't remember, as well as for those that may not have ever seen this. But the Legislative Resolution basically asked the Commissioner to do an evaluation of the education data systems and the usefulness and the effectiveness in the state. And so we took a look at all of the education data systems, the teaching and learning systems, the back office systems, and the administrative systems, and we asked a number of questions and did a comprehensive study that looked at all of the pieces in this particular frame. And through the focus groups and the surveys, we basically covered around 80% of the student population as far as the number of districts, and so it was a comprehensive view of what was existing in the state. And we found that at that time, about five years ago, that our districts were spending over 655,000 hours a year sending us data. That was just to get us the data that we had requested from them, and that was even in the digital format, electronic manner. We also found that with the software systems and the different licenses, in addition to the staff time, that we were spending about $100 million a year in providing that type of data and information to us here at the department. And the Commissioner often joked at the time that that was crazy because it was, we were spending that amount of time to collect the data, to aggregate a report, tell the Feds, wait a year for them to tell us what, how we're doing. And so it really was a catalyst for us to focus on how we can be more actionable in the use of our data. So the federal investment that occurred in 2012 really was a catalyst for what we call Advisor. Advisor began as an acronym. It's an advanced data views informing students' educational response. It's now just Advisor. It's our data system. It's essentially a significant modernization of automating electronically the data movement to the department directly from the student information systems. We also, at that time, spent some time working with districts to help them better understand how to use data, building out our research and evaluation capacity, and thinking differently about our survey-based collections through a tool called Qualtrics. So, and we started in 2012 with the implementation and the update of the Advisor system. The first full year is the one we're in right now, where all school districts are actually onboard, providing us what we would characterize as this automated API connection from their student information systems into Advisor. And so this is the first full year that we've ever utilized this system to its full extent.
Special purpose schools, too.
And we've been able to engage the special purpose schools as a part of this work, and the tool that's used by our interim program schools as well is also integrated with the connection. And so what that does is, the second bullet point, is that it enables what we characterize as this data ecosystem. It creates an opportunity for data, now that it's being submitted electronically, to be also provided back to school districts in a more efficient and effective way. So a student enrolls in a school, they're able, their records are able to be electronically transferred, and their services that they need, and the types of systems of support that they have available to them from the previous district now can essentially immediately in real time be moved. We've not fully implemented a lot of these aspirational pieces yet. Those are, you know, contingent upon time and resources to help us move forward, but these are possibilities that the ecosystem now has created for us. In addition, it creates what we call this interoperability, which our communications staff doesn't necessarily like that word, but in the digital data geek world, the interoperability space is simply the opportunity for the systems to talk to each other and to share data more effectively and seamlessly as a part of that work. So the last two slides, from an update perspective, and we'll open up questions. I would have Matt kind of talk a little bit specifically about some of the current Advisor uses, essentially the data that comes in from Advisor and how we've been able to and what we currently use for, use that data for.
Sure.
So you all are probably familiar with the recently revised Nebraska Education Profile website, so I believe the Commissioner shared that with you in the past. So Advisor is one of the main feeders, obviously, for the new NEP site. We'll continue to make changes, exciting changes actually, to that over the coming year, which you'll be, you'll want to see when we release the new pieces of that. State and federal reporting, not all of it, there are other data collections across the department, but the vast majority of it now is being fed through Advisor, which is good. That includes much of the accountability data, not all of it, but much of the AQuest-related accountability data comes there, too. We continue to build out additional capacities around that system, such as the Advisor dashboard. We have conversations about other opportunities, too, there, things that we could do around parent dashboards, things that we could do around a great deal of research and evaluation. We have a new partnership with the University of Nebraska at Omaha where we're looking at impacts of attendance information and its effect on student test scores, and a lot of that information is coming in now through Advisor. So it really enhances our research and evaluation capacity, which we've been trying to move forward as well. And then the continuous improvement process generally, too. So Dean talked a little bit about the data cadre. We had some really nice efforts with that a few years ago with our SLDS funding. But one of the things that I want to underscore on a lot of this is that a lot of the resources that have been injected into this process have come, thankfully, from federal funds, but unfortunately, we haven't received as much support on the state from the Nebraska state side. And so that's something that I think as we look in the future, we'll continue to want to highlight, because there are continuing changes, pieces that we will always need for this. I thought it was interesting when Don was talking about the accreditation piece, you know, they've been working on accreditation since 1860. So, you know, we've had a digital data collection for less than 15 years is all, so we probably have a lot of growing yet to do. It's nice that we had those federal grant injections, but we have to be able to sustain that over the long run, so those are some things we'll need. So finally, related to some future kind of data targets, and these are pieces that are essentially embedded within our ongoing commitment to the data collection process around student data privacy and security, this commitment to using data effectively and efficiently, supporting the student transitions. And those are the transitions from facility to facility, location to location, those kinds of pieces. This data ecosystem gives us the capacity to do those kinds of things. The action-based research, the early warning signals, the finance data, and other kinds of things that help to inform policy and practice in a way different way moving forward. And ultimately, we're always looking for ways that we can reduce the reporting burden in identifying how we can make this more efficient and effective. One of the annual opportunities that we have is the Data Conference, where we're able to bring the data folks together. And this year's conference is in, at the end of April, and ultimately, in the theme of Champions for Equity in Education, better data, better decisions is the theme of the conference. And so the registration and pieces are open now, so. So with that, we'll stop, see if there's any questions or clarifications.
Maybe one question started, I think I say, at least some folks might have, but one of our kind of pain, could you highlight a couple of the pain points that we're kind of been aware of with, you know, school districts in the transition? Because I mean, I know that I've had superintendents hit me up and go, well, when's this gonna, you know, really work? What are the types of pain points that we've seen in the transition and, you know, kind of how are we working to help schools with those things?
So one of, one of the commitments that we made was to allow local choice and flexibility with regard to the student information systems that they want to use. And so right now, there are five, six student information systems that are certified to provide data to Advisor. And so there's a couple of dynamics that are at play here, because each of those five or six vendors are responsible for providing the connections that bring the data to us. And they each have capacities that are different. And so that each of those takes time and provides things and the quality of their experiences at different levels. And so there's that kind of challenge of working with the vendors locally. We, over the periods of implementation, have worked very hard directly with the vendors to help create a positive congenial visionary focus where we want to go and why we're doing what we're doing. But as with everything, there's, anytime there's a massive monumental shift, a transformational shift, quite honestly, there's going to be hiccups along the way in the implementation. And so I think that's maybe one of the pieces of this puzzle. The other piece that sometimes I think gets disconnected is when you make a transition because of the high stakes element of the data, so like last year, it was essentially a parallel year. So what that means is, guess what? We're doing things twice. We're doing things the automated futuristic way, and we're doing things the old-fashioned way, because we need to make sure there's fidelity and comparison and accuracy as a part of that work. And so anytime there's a change, there's that curve of pain, but ultimately, as we come out of that curve of pain, we believe that the systems and infrastructure will be in a better place for us moving forward. Could I add into that, too, Dean? That I think it's also important, Commissioner, for the board to understand that not everything is Advisor, right? So what we're talking about there primarily is student-related data that's collected for purposes of state and federal reporting. There are a lot of other collections that happen across the department for other reasons that are not Advisor. So when a school district says, oh my gosh, what, you want this, and you want that, and you want that, it's not accurate to perfectly correlate that with, well, that's Advisor, right? That could be this group sent out a certain application, or there was a survey went out, or how did you feel about this? Or, you know, the EBA process is a great example. That's not Advisor, right? These are other things that happen, collection. So there's a lot of collection of information that goes on. When it comes to that student information space that we're submitting to EdFAX and the Feds and others, Advisor is significantly increasing efficiencies, and it will get better and better, but just don't confound that with, well, data collection generally, because there are different things.
Right. And I was just going to highlight, I mean, you hit on a couple of those major pain points, but I think one of the other things that I want the board, I guess, to know relative to data collection, so we're changing also by federal regulation, the responsibility to collect data from a financial standpoint differently at a building level. So that one's taking place at the same time that we're doing these other elements. We're really looking at, because I think we've learned a lot through these processes, how we can better automate other data collections as well in the long run and have a set of data standards, especially like probably around the, any, well, I guess, any of this element, and how you work with the various multiple vendors. So we've had, we've come a long, long way. I mean, I appreciate Matt kind of talking. I actually think it's a miracle that we have this done, because when I first started, I remember putting a budget request in for several million dollars to the legislature. That study was conducted, it said we needed three, four million dollars a year to actually, and we got none of that money. And so if you actually think, it's been remarkable what has been able to be built in this timeframe, so I, you know, a lot of credit to both Dean and Matt and the teams of people that have been doing that. But there are other data collections that I will say are still kind of in the old world thinking yet a little bit that are coming, going to have to come online to actually remove some of those pain points. And Robin earlier told me how much superintendents love change, so I, but there's just many, so I, somebody, I didn't know if Rachel had a question, I thought, yeah.
Well, mine is not real significant, but I just want to make sure I understand this. With, and I like the term ecosystem. I like that. So if we took this ecosystem and compared it to the Hall of Shame or the Wall of Shame, there's a lot less forms that schools have to fill out. Would that be correct?
So there's a lot less duplicative forms
Okay.
that schools would have to fill out. So especially as it relates to the individuals or the student level-based data. So that would be a fair way to say it.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Which kind of gets to my question about the pain and the shame and all of those things. And that's really understanding and being able to differentiate the data collection issues that have been resolved by Advisor versus those data collection issues that are still out there. Because I believe what I've heard from some of my schools is a sense that moving forward with Advisor would reduce the burden of data collection, and I don't think that's happening because of these other kinds of data requests that may be different than student information Advisor. And sometimes those requests may be duplicative in some components, because there may be a student information component, and I don't know if all of those have been linked across data requests, or if there's a perception when an information, a data request comes in for a report for whatever federal program or whatever, that there may be student data points that are requested in that report that are actually in Advisor, but we haven't done that cross-check. So I don't know if one, that's done, and two, if we can have a better understanding of what are those other data collection issues that are out there? And are they federal programs predominantly, or are there some state? Are they statutory? What's creating this data reporting concern that is still out there? I think you guys have done an amazing job in moving forward with the Advisor and the student data element, but there's still maybe this other pool of data out there that's causing some angst in our schools. If we could understand what that is and how we move forward, or what request for funding to try to get that resolved, I think would be very beneficial for our schools.
Yeah, and we'll need some advocacy on the, again, we keep asking for resources around certain things, so differences now compared to what I think have even happened, the expectations of accountability of results relative to federal funds, a very different environment than where we just used to check on, did you spend the funds the way you said you would, right? So there's kind of changes that are taking place. The base system, as we kind of keep building it, it does have to continue to be connected, so there's other investments to be made as we build that out around that philosophy. And that's hard for schools to understand. And then you throw on, we're going to collect finance data from a building level, then you throw on some other things along those lines. The other thing I get, I've told Dean, this is my other great line from the past, I guess, but Dean, I say, Dean, I don't know what you're all worried about, this data thing's just a fad, right? I mean, oddly enough, just like computers have done, I think, for society generally, you know, everybody said, well, how much less there'd be to do on the whole, but instead it actually creates more demand for information. And so And so, it feels like to me that every time there's a new funding source, a new, we've talked about grants, management system and other things, every time there's a new expectation around that, they add just little elements of expectations for those funds. And I think that's the pressure point for, for a lot of this work. And I, I don't have a great list, I don't expect Dean and Matt have a great list of all those things right now, but that is very much the work that we have underway now to, to keep taking the student data side. And now it gives us a chance to build around that philosophy at least, so.
One thing I may add just to that point is, we are undertaking a sort of a reprise of the original education data study. So, the study that was released in 2014 is now five years old and had a five-year roadmap. And so, we're in the process of conducting that study again for two, with two lenses. One is what progress did we make and what impact did we have on the amount of time? And is it more efficient? Is it more effective? Did we save money? Did we increase the cost? The other part of that then is what are the pain points that we need to really prioritize so that we can lay out the next five-year roadmap on what we need to do to provide supports and investments moving forward? The second piece to your, your point is the whole evaluation of data collections and that whole kind of governance associated to what data elements and what are the requirements and where that all is happening, is something that we're kind of going through, a continuous improvement process ourselves and updating our expectations around the review of those resources, the data collections themselves, and creating an element of transparency and thoughtful strategic prioritization of those particular resources as well. So, that's, that's something that's very much on our, on our list of things to accomplish to, to address what you're describing.
Well, so thank you, Dean and Matt, for taking this time. I hope, yeah. And I, I guess it's not a fad, is what I've learned, so. So, last but not least, on my, my presentation, I'll put it that way, Jeremy Henninger. I asked Jeremy and I guess Corey, it looks like Corey's coming up too, so, to present a little bit on the, the timeline on the assessment work. And obviously, probably one more pain point, right, relative to how quickly we can turn around reporting. And I, I wanted you to have a, kind of a bit of the historical perspective, policy choices we've made along the way over the last several years and the importance of those things. And then, kind of a bit of how we imagine this coming together for the future, so, so I'll turn it over to Jeremy.
For the record, Section Director of Statewide Assessment, Jeremy Henninger.
I'm Corey Upler, Academic Officer and Administrator for the Office of Teaching, Learning and Assessment. And if you thought the data conversation from Matt and Dean was exciting, just wait. Because Jeremy is just gonna knock your socks off this afternoon, so.
High expectations there. Great. I, being fourth in this list, I was really worried about that. If anybody still, still be awake, so I'll see if I can wake everybody up a little bit. So, like the Commissioner said, we thought it was a, a good time to bring this information forward to try to let everybody know. Everybody's interested in assessment reporting dates. Our districts are concerned about it and want to know when that's gonna happen. The board is interested, the media is interested, other staff in the department are interested because our dates impact everybody else's dates, whether that's accountability or putting things out in the NEP for the public. And so, wanted to try to give some context for where we are and why we're here, but also give some information about where we expect to be moving forward. So hopefully, I can answer some of those questions and give some information that, that kind of sets this up and explains why we're, why we're, where we are right now. So, last year was our first year of NSCAS, so the Nebraska Student Centered Assessment System. Previous to that, we had NESA, the Nebraska State Accountability Tests. And, and so, we had a, a big change last year. And, and we really wanted to focus on student-centered when we talked about that. So we, we started talking about not only a statewide assessment, but we talked about how do we support, from the department's position, balanced assessment for all our districts? We, we can't necessarily make a balanced assessment system, but we can support different aspects of that. One of the big decision points that came through that process, when we moved our general assessment in grades through through eight from our previous vendor to NWA, was to make those adaptive tests. So in ELA, for English Language Arts and for Mathematics, we changed to adaptive testing. And so, adaptive tests basically, as students are engaged in that test, the questions either get easier if students are missing questions or harder if students get them correct. So it's adapting to the students' level, level in real time, so it's a computer adaptive test. The couple of advantages to that, and there are several. So it's adjusting to meet students at their particular level, which lowers the frustration level for many of our kids, not only for kids that may be overwhelmed with difficult questions, right? But also for our students that didn't find those tests challenging because it challenges them where they are. And so, because of that, it also increases student engagement in those items because they're not likely to find them boring or overwhelming, it's more likely to meet them where they are. A second part of the student-centered is the goal to, and if you look at the RFP, it was very clear that we wanted to return results sooner, right? And, and that way, we could inform instructional decisions and reinforce NDE's equity commitment. So, not only should we get that, that information back, but we can understand our students' who's achieving, who's not achieving, and we were able to address those, those particular needs. And so, the overall question is, where are we achieving this goal? So, I, I think it's important to understand that last year was the first year of this move, and we made a lot of changes last year. And, and we knew going into that year that the, the reporting dates were gonna be pushed back for several reasons. One of the big reasons, we're setting cut scores for mathematics, so that we had to go through a process last summer and then ultimately come up through the department, through the Commissioner for a recommendation to the board to be approved in August. All of those things have an impact on it. So, we knew we were gonna be later last year, where are we this year? Where are we gonna be in the future? That's kind of the, what I'm trying to answer with, with our presentation today. So some background information, just so everybody's kind of on the, the same page. Equating is the process we use in, in assessment to make sure that the results from year to year mean the same thing. So if I'm, if I'm a fourth grade student and I get a 125, that's just a made-up number, by the way, but if I get a 125 and a new, another fourth grade student takes the test next year and they get a 125, equating is the process that we use to make sure those 125s mean exactly the same thing and are not, because the students will not take the same test, right? And so, we want to, we have to make sure that those tests essentially means, mean the same thing. There's two types of equating. Post-equating, which by its name is completed after the test, right? There's less risk with post-equating because we get all of those, we get a whole nother administration's worth of information to make sure that everything we know about them statistically in those, the questions, the items, students and the student responses are, are stable, we understand it, and there's, so there's less risk. Obviously, with post-equating, it's happening afterwards, it pushes those results later in that we can return back to districts, schools, students, parents, all of those different stakeholders that are interested in them. Pre-equating, on the other hand, obviously, is before the test. It's based on statistics that we pull from field testing or previous administration. So we're looking at item statistics, and, and so it's based on that information, it's less, there's less information, and so it's a riskier process because things can change from administration to administration. And so, pre-equating sounds good, and it is good and it can work, but there is some more risk involved. Last year with our administration, the psychometricians, those people that are way smarter than I am as far as measurement goes and mathematics, they recommended, we had to do, I'll put it this way, we had to do post-equating last year because it was the first year, we couldn't do it any other way but to post-acute. The goal, the hope was that we could move to pre-equating this year so that we could get, return results quicker. Unfortunately, there was, for lack of getting very technical with you, which I don't want to do, because it made, made me sound like I don't know what I'm talking about and we would hate for that to happen. But, but there was a lot of noise in the system last year with, it's the first year, first year of moving to a new vendor, a new platform, a new computer-based system, there was a lot of noise in the system. So the psychometricians recommended, not only the psychometricians from NWA or vendor, but the psychometricians that we had in consult, consultations with the department, recommended that we do post-equating one more year to get another batch of data to make sure when we move to pre-equating, that we're comfortable with all the decisions that we made. And so, we thought we were gonna, we wanted to get to pre-equating this year, we were not able to do that. So we're still in a post-equating world for this year. And so, that's gonna still impact some of the dates that I'm gonna give you here in a minute. Also, talk about this, earlier I mentioned, we made a decision, we, meaning everybody that was in this room at the time and the department itself and districts that had a say in what we were doing, asked us to move to adaptive testing. It's important to know that that decision has an impact as well. So we used to be in the fixed form world, right? So the fixed form means that all the students in a specific grade level took the same test. If I was a fourth grade ELA student, all the fourth grade ELA students across the entire state took the same test. Those items were specifically selected when we were making that form, that form of the test. And also know that raw scores at the time were immediately available. So when a student got done with that test on a computer, we returned back a raw score to, to the, the school that said, the student got X number of questions correct out of X number possible. So they got a percent correct almost immediately in the computer-based system. When we moved to the adaptive test, there's some great things about it, like I mentioned before, but basically, it customized the test for every student. So if you have 23,000 students in a grade level, which we have approximately, that means that there's actually 23,000 different tests being given in fourth grade ELA. And so, we went from one to 23,000. Compared to fixed form, it requires about 10 times as many items. That also means when I'm doing that pre-equating, post-equating, I'm doing calculations from, say, 300 items to 3,000 items. One of the things that was interesting to me is when the psychometricians talked about how much time those calculations took in, after last year's test. One, one of calculations that they did took 12 computing days. So it took 12 continuous days of computing processing times to do the calc, one of the, one set of calculations for this because we have 23,000 different tests going on and we need to make sure all of that is being done correctly for the students' sakes so that when we return results, that those are accurate results. It's also important to know that a raw score is available. So when a student's finished with this test, I could tell you how many students, how many questions they got right, how many questions they got wrong. The problem with that, because the test is adapting, right, that, that information is less useful than it was on the fixed form world. So for, for example, Corey's doing really well on the test, he's getting really difficult questions, he's missing very few questions, so overall, he has harder, much harder questions than I would, because I'm struggling a little bit, I'm getting question, more questions wrong. In the end, Corey and I could end up with the same percentage of questions correct, right? But because Corey had much more difficult questions on this adaptive test than I did because I was struggling, his score's gonna be significantly higher than mine, even though the percentage correct is the same. And so, turning a raw score around to schools is somewhat problematic in that it can be easily misinterpreted because we might get the same raw score, but our overall level, our performance level is very different in the end. So the, the easy data that we were able to turn around back in the fixed form world is not the same easy data that we could turn around now. And because that's easily misunderstood, we've made the decision not to share that raw score right away because it's so easily misunderstood. So that's important to understand as well. So talking about, a little bit about our tests, so all of our tests have a specific number of item slots, right? How many questions can you fit on a test? Everybody's worried about how long these tests take. We're very cognizant of that and we want to make them as short as we can, but still as effective as we can in giving information back. And so, item slots, first of all, we have operational items, filling those operational slots. Those count towards a student's score, just like you would in any test that a student takes. For instance, there might be 48 items on the, or 58 items on the test, 40, 80 of them might be operational items. So those all count towards the student's final score, right? We also have field test items that we, we plug into this, they're called embedded field test items. Instead of giving a whole different test, we embed questions that don't count for the student, but are basically, we're testing the items instead of testing the students. And so, those items can be put into the item bank for future use. Students, the great thing about that is a student doesn't know which is operational, which is field test, so they're trying just as hard as they normally would. But we're basically using that to increase the number of items in our item bank to make it so we have a more robust item bank, a better functioning item bank. So those items are put in there on a regular basis, we've been doing that for years for the ongoing maintenance of our test system, okay? Also, we have linking items, and linking items may or may count towards a student's score depending on how the design is done. But basically, those are used for equating and establishing and maintaining a vertical scale. So those items are basically common. So if, if all those fourth grade students have 58 questions, a small number of them might be the same across all of those students because we need to make sure, those are the items that we use to understand the pre-equating process, post-equating processes, and making sure our vertical scales are working the way that they're supposed to. I mentioned all of that because we, as we go into this year, as we went into this year, we had to make decisions about how we use those item slots. So the operational ones are already, are already set, right? We had to decide, do we focus more on field test items or linking items because we only have a set number of those, okay? So, when we were making that decision, we focused on stability, so making sure that the vertical scale that we put in place last year is working, which allows students to see and, and schools to see growth from grade level to grade level. So we, we focused on that stability there. Long-term health of the program, so making sure the item bank supports students at all levels. So when we went from fixed form world to adaptive world, we needed all of a sudden many more questions than we had previously. What we found as we started to look at this is that students on the high end had less questions that they needed to, to, to challenge them. And so, when we were looking at the item bank this year and item writing with our teachers, we focused on more difficult questions so that they got the questions they needed to be engaged and to get more information back. So we focused on that, so the long-term health of the program means the long-term health of the item bank, okay? And then also know that we have lots of processes as we moved into last year and this year is to making, making sure that when we return scores, we have quality processes and that we can rely upon, that we don't have incorrect data going out, that we then have to pull back and then change for people. So all of that is going into the dates, so the, the dates that we have here. So, on this, the first two rows are probably the most important of, of the chart. So the first is the preliminary data and the second is the final data. You can see the first column there is 2017 reporting dates and the, and the dates that we hit last year, right? So on 9/5/18, districts saw their preliminary data for the la, for the, for the first time. And then on 10/19/18, when we were able to give them final data, and then we had to do all of the AQuest and all the reporting processes that we needed to do in-house so that we could get to the public reporting. The dates that we are proposing for this year, you'll see in the second column that are bolded, you see 8/5/19 and 8/26/19, those are earlier than last year, they're not as early as we want. And we've heard from you, we've heard from others, that really, we want to get results, preliminary results back to districts by 6:1. That wasn't doable for this year. We looked at it and we tried really hard to see if we could make those dates. You'll see the, the proposed or the draft dates for next year would be 6:1 and 7:6, so those dates get quite a bit earlier for next year in year three because we're able to move to pre-equating next year. You'll notice there is an asterisk there because I don't want to come out and say, and these are officially the dates, we're gonna hit them 100% because they are dependent on a stable administration for this year, right? So, the, the test window opens up on March 18th. If everything goes the way that we anticipate it will, we have no reason to think that it won't, but we still have, those dates are dependent on everything happening in the it won't. But we still have, those dates are dependent on everything happening the way that we want to. Even though what we, we think we're going to make those dates, and I should point out, we're also putting the 6-1 date in the contracts as we work through the contracts for this year. It's also important to know that we still don't think this is early enough, right? If I'm making decisions on the part of a district, I need earlier, even earlier results because by 6-1, I've already set my schedule for next year. I've done a lot of the work that I'm going to do as a, as a district. So know that, and for spring 2020, this is what we're working with. So working with NWA to make sure that preliminary scores are turned around almost immediately to students, okay? So we, after that, we might have business rules that need to clean up and clean those up for reporting in those pieces. So it might be possible that a student could get a preliminary score and then that would be suppressed for final reporting because some business rule happens that, that would happen with. But that, that is our intention, is to turn around those. We're still trying to figure out if that means within 24 hours, whether that means immediately on the student's screen, or whether that means 48 hours. But basically, right in there, that, that, those results would be almost turned around, almost, almost immediately to the district so that they have information, at least preliminary information, to be making instructional decisions, to be making decisions about programming for students and all of those types of things. So the last slide here. And I wanted just to update everybody on this so that you know when you get a chance to have a say in some of these processes, right? And so this month, we, we let the Teaching and Learning Committee know that we're working on contracts for our three big assessment vendors. ACT for the high school, NWA for the general assessments in three through eight, and DRC for the alternate assessments. Working with all three of those. In April, we plan to have as a discussion item, those three contracts, and then hopefully in May, we'll have an action item for those three big contracts as well. That date, that 6-1 date, we're working on actually putting that date into all of those contracts. And if they, we can't make those dates for a very good reason. Say, in 2021, when we do science and we have to set cut scores, that they'll have that information in the contract. So you'll see those when you approve those, those big contracts. So that's a lot of information. I probably spoke way too fast, but there we go.
Yeah, wow.
Microphone.
I wanted to make sure I understood.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm getting tired. We're going to have a second year of post equating. Did I hear that right?
Correct. This year, this current year we're in is the second year of post equating.
Okay. And then when you're talking about item numbers, you had operational field test, linking items. The operational items are a set number and the other two are variable numbers?
Correct. So the test is the same length every year for every student, but those numbers could be manipulated between field test numbers and linking, or field test items and linking items depending on what our priority is. So in the, next year, we'll probably emphasize linking because of that pre equating, so we can start the checks earlier and less on field test. But they, those can be manipulated based on the priority for a given year. Yes.
Okay. But operational will always be a set number?
Well, it, currently it is. Technically with adaptive, we may be able to get to the point where in the future that we could actually make the test shorter. We're, we're, we're a few years away from that because it requires a lot of data to be able to make those types of decisions. And, and so I, I don't want to make any promises, but that's, the potential of adaptive testing is you can actually make testing shorter because you can get to where the student's level is faster. And that's what happens on MAPGrowth testing that NWA runs. But they are also talking about many more thousands of worth of students and many more years in their program. And so the data that we need, we need to, we have, we need to have a lot more data to be able to make those decisions as we move forward.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So now my question is kind of simplistic. Can you make that simplistic? Because I think to be able to communicate to constituents, the complexity of what you just shared, in a way that, that helps to understand the rationalization of this delayed time period that will occur for another year to two years in getting results back is really important. And if that can be put out in a way that is very simplistic for even parents and non educators to understand, I think would be really valuable. Because that, that was pretty complex.
It is very complex.
Very, very informative.
It's complex because the whole thing is complex, right? I mean, it just, it just is, right? Because I'd love to make those dates earlier. And I, and I worked really hard with NWA to try to get them earlier. One thing that I mentioned about is the commissioner has asked us to work on a letter that's going to come out to schools to explain this in a more simplistic fashion. But also know that with our district assessment contacts, our DAX, we're also planning on doing a recording of this because there are people that understand this and can communicate some of these pieces out to others as well. So we're working on those communication pieces.
I think doing a letter for parents also, so that schools have that sample letter, so they don't have to try to put it in that more simplistic fashion would be really helpful. Thank you.
Patsy.
I agree with the communication to parents and administrators. I work with the Citizens Academy and its school system in LPS, and they ask me all kinds of questions about this. And I was like, well, I'll try my hardest to find out the answers, you know, that kind of thing. So if we could be proactive with that and get them to understanding. Okay, so emphasis probably, you'll probably laugh at my question.
I will not.
But that'll be all right. Okay, so you made this statement, you talked about raw scores and that they were available right after the test. And I did not think that sounded very complex when you explained that to me compared to a lot of other things. And so you also stated right after that, you decided not to share raw scores right away because you didn't think there would be an understanding of that. But understanding that Corey had an easier test and you had a more difficult test, vice versa, telling me that as a parent and that my son's raw score was the same as his, even though, you know, he took an easier test, to me, that makes perfect sense because you're getting more difficult questions. And so if you hand me the raw score, plus I don't know that I would even know Corey's score. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. So typically, those don't go to parents. Those actually just go to teachers. So if I'm looking, so the, the problem is that the teachers don't know which questions the student had at the time, right? So they may anticipate, because Corey typically gets better grades than I do, that he's going to get more difficult questions. But that's not always necessarily the case because we often have students that achieve over their grade, you know, beyond what they get for grades because they might care for this particular test, or they just tried harder today. Or students that are struggling with a test but get good grades. And so the teachers can't see which level of difficulty the questions are. So it's more informative to turn around, and what the intention is for year three is to turn around the performance level. Not only the, the, the scale score and what level that is, but whether the student is developing on track or the CCR benchmark because that information is much more informative for, for teachers and for parents. Because we also have ALDs, achievement level descriptors, that describe each one of those levels and the abilities of students, the typical abilities of each of those students. In general, I think it's, it's, I, and this is my interpretation of this, it's, it's hard for people to see the difference. If we both got a 50%, in the end, why we would get a different grade, a grade or a performance level. I think that, that's where we've been in.
Yeah. I just thought maybe you would quell some of that, into that, why are we not getting these back if you did that explanation statement and said, and the final scores will be arriving? And I, I don't know, but it just seemed like I had a lot of parents who were like, whoa, on the edge.
Well, and they definitely want, and, and they, they, they want and they deserve earlier results. Getting the, all the changes we've had, it just takes, what I'd say is it takes more time to get to where we want to be. And we can't just do it automatically because we need all the data to be able to do those things.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Rob.
So am I. Do I, do my eyes look a little glazed?
Sorry.
Yeah. No, no, that's not your problem. You know that letter she's talking about? Send me one of those. And, and, okay, just some quick questions.
Sure.
ACT, we give to 11th graders?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your cohort students, which are typically 11th graders.
Okay, all right. Thank you. NWEA MAPS, give to?
That is a choice for districts. We provide it free of, we provide, we, we pay for the cost for grades three through eight in MAPGrowth, but districts decide who and how often take that test.
And then what was the, what was the third one that you mentioned?
Yeah. So the, the DRC, Data Recognition Corporation, they provide the alternate test. So that alternate test is for grades three through eight and 11, but it's typically for students that have significant cognitive disabilities. And that's typically about 1% of our students.
If I say alternative testing, that's sufficient?
Yeah.
All right.
Can I just clarify that the NWA, the, there's the MAPGrowth component, which is the interim, but they also are doing the summative for us too. So MAPGrowth is not the summative. There is.
NSGAS.
NSGAS, correct, yes.
So the NSGAS is not optional, right? All, all the kids in grades three, three through eight have to take those tests. The MAPGrowth is a separate interim piece that focuses on growth more than anything else, and that's optional.
And, and all of these are aligned with our standards, the ones that have been completed?
Yeah, that is correct.
That's correct. All right. And then what we're doing with these is to modify instruction and provide for maybe staff development and that sort of thing. Is, is the, is, does it do, is it a value, in your opinion, to label schools because of the results of these tests?
That's a good question.
You know, good, good questions are those we really don't, good questions are.
I'm going to throw that one to the commissioner, actually.
Really, good questions are really those that we just don't know the answer to. And I appreciate that. And I'm being, I'm pushing the envelope on this, not apologize for that. Commissioner, you don't even have to provide. I, I, I'm getting to a point here that assessments drive me crazy. Okay? I'll leave it at that for right now. Because we know that assessments tell us more than anything. Granted, I appreciate the fact that they are intended to help teachers become better teachers, to provide kids with better instruction. I get that, but that sort of thing. But unfortunately, when we start to get into labeling, and I understand that's not you, and really, I know it's not the commissioner either, we, we get from things on high. But, but really, what we, we have found is that regardless of what assessment we use, we have found out that the higher the socioeconomic status of a student, the greater the opportunity to do well. And the opposite shows the other way. And, and my soapbox is not, is still growing. And so I'll keep, keep hammering on that. But I'm just really concerned. And guys, I can't even imagine how you guys think. It's amazing to me.
It's scary.
Yeah. Your ability to take data and do things with it. I just, I appreciate that.
I hope this is a quick question, and you didn't laugh at the other one. But what kind of information does the NSGAS provide that the MAP does not? Because I hear over and over from teachers that they prefer the MAP. So what, what's the difference and why are we doing two?
So that's, that's a good question as well. So the MAPGrowth does a better job of turning results around than our test. Our test is designed to be a summative test. And, and if you look back at the history of that piece, it was, it was put into place, a statewide assessment was put into place. If you look at the law for accountability purposes and the purposes of compare, being able to compare schools and districts to one another. That was, and so it was originally designed for that intention. Last year, with the big change, with the change to Nebraska Student Centered Assessment System, is to trying to do more with and providing more information back. The, the, the fact is that our test is very short. And because it's short, so for instance, our ELA test is only 48 questions long. If you look at the number of standards that covers, it's, there's a lot of standards there. And to be able to give reliable results on all of those indicators underneath there, our test would have to be a lot, a lot longer to give good results back. So not only does it provide a summative test, but it also does provide some sub scores as well. So for ELA, for instance, we provide a vocabulary score, a reading comprehension score, and a writing skill score. So there is some sub pieces of that. What I would tell you is that the, the summative test should only be looked at in conjunction with other measures that are going on, whether that's grades, whether it's interim benchmark, whether it's formative test results. Because it is, it is a point in time test, and it's good for identifying certain aspects, but it needs to be looked at holistically with a lot of other evidence as well because it can't answer all of the questions that we have.
So it's not a good measure of a school's success or failure?
It shouldn't be used as the only measure.
The only, okay. Thank you so much.
Yes.
So, to Robin, we own that. When you say, oh, those people somewhere else, that would be us. So I, I'm just going to tell you, we have to think about what we're doing. We've established the criteria for classification. We have to visit or revisit how we're weighting, how we're looking at these processes. So I think it's important to understand, we as a board are the ones that approved the current classification system that we have in place. If there are things about, we approve the contract for the assessment system that we have in place. Yes, there's statutory elements that moved us in this direction. But there are also opportunities that we have to reevaluate where we are and what we do for classification of schools around AQuest and what level of weighting we put into assessment as a part of that process. So we kind of own that. Now, granted, I think that's an important topic that has elements of compromise and lots of things to come into play. But, but it's probably important that we revisit that at some point. One, at least to truly understand what it is that, that we as a board, a previous board, so to speak, approved. And two, what this current board wants to do moving forward and, and understand that process. The other piece, I think, continuing to spend some time in understanding adaptive. And it's such a complex concept. And I think you did a really good job in explaining adaptive. But again, to explain it to, to a parent, you know, to me, it's more about understanding that Corey can do triple digit addition. And Jeremy, you haven't mastered single-digit addition, you know? We've got to get down to that level of specificity to understand that, that adaptive is looking at where you're at right now in particular skill sets and where another student is. And I think the more we can help people start to understand that concept, the more they can start to understand, oh, isn't that kind of cool? There's a test that starts to, to look at that and almost customizes to that student-centered approach. So.
Just to point out, we have a three, it's about a three-minute video that was intended for students and therefore others as well, that explains a computer adaptive test. And so I think it was on the information.
Is it like elementary level students?
Yeah, actually, absolutely it was. Yeah. And I think it was on the information sheet, but I can, we can send that out to you again if you want to take a look at that. Yeah.
Just a quick question.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. All these math things are biting in my head right now. But as far as the MAP test, we only require it once in elementary school. If the teacher chooses to do it more often, to be a better instructor, that's their choice, right?
Correct.
So when you say elementary, that's grades three through six?
Depends on how they define their elementary.
In their district?
Correct.
Okay. And then it's required somewhere in the middle school?
Correct. And it's not.
Just once, right?
And it's not necessarily MAPGrowth. They could use any norm reference test. And so they could be choosing a different test like the Terranova or the Stanford nine or.
Okay.
So we, we provide one option for them because of our big contract that we have. But they could choose a different test if they wanted to, to report. But the- But they could choose a different test if they wanted to to report. But the, as far as norm reference tests that they have to report, it's one, one time, one grade in elementary, one grade in middle school. We took away the high school requirement because we're using the ACT.
ACT. So that's one thing. We're only requiring one in elementary, one in middle school. Other teachers, and this made me think for you, Robin, they do that to make themselves better instructors to meet the needs of their students. Especially with MAPs, you know exactly where they're weak and exactly how to help them. So we have since, for quite a while, cut back on it, on assessments the way it used to be, right? So we have cut back, but maybe not enough. I don't know.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you very much for all that you've done for us. Thank you for the briefing. And the board will take a break until four o'clock. Standing committee reports, and if we could have, we're gonna start out with Lisa Fricki. Please report on the AQuest Teaching and Learning Domain Committee meeting, please.
I'd be happy to do that. Um, our committee is bringing forth two items today. The first one is discussion of item 3.4.8 in regards to the Nebraska World Language Standards. And Cory Epler and Stephanie Call are going to provide us with some more information about this. So there they are. Welcome, and thank you for being here to talk to us about this.
You're welcome. Well, we're excited to be here. I assured John that we have about a 90-minute presentation today, so settle in.
And I was asking for two hours, but you brought it down to one.
I, I'm coming up short as usual, so sorry. We'll, we'll note that. I'm Cory Epler, Academic Officer and Administrator for the Office of Teaching, Learning, and Assessment.
Stephanie Call, World Language Specialist.
And we're here today to talk about the revision to Nebraska's World Language Standards. And a really exciting opportunity for us is the current essential learning standards have not been revised since 1996. So we'll talk a little bit more about that process, but as we start, it seems the trend today has been to talk a little bit about our statutory responsibility and some of the mechanisms that we currently have in place. So I just wanted to start off with the law that there, that exists around content area standards development and the state board's responsibility. Nebraska revised statute indicates that the state board shall approve content area standards in reading, writing, mathematics, science, and social studies, and that those standards should be revised every seven years. However, we have a commissioner who continues to challenge us to think beyond the minimums. So despite those standards that are required by law, we do have content area standards for all content areas that are taught in an instructional program in our schools. So there are fine arts standards, there are physical education standards, world language standards, health education, career and technical education standards as well. Districts are not required to adopt these content area standards, thinking about the conversation of what's in Rule 10. What we find, though, is that as we provide the framework for quality teaching and learning through these content area standards, that districts do use these standards even though they are not required by law to utilize those. One thing that I also wanted to mention, I do have hard copies, is that over the last several years, we've worked to provide transparency around when content area standards will be revised. This has been on our website for a couple of years now, but our hope is that as districts are looking at this timeline, we recognize that many of them are making decisions around curriculum, around textbook adoption, and aligning it with our content area standards revision timeline. So we divide it into the areas that are assessed by the summative assessment, ELA, math, and science. The content area is not assessed by summative, as well as the career and technical education content areas as well. We do work to use a consistent process across all content areas, and I think it's important to note that we do use educators to write our standards. We draw educators across all different levels of our pre-K through post-secondary system, ensuring that there's representation from like big schools, small schools, and across the state of Nebraska. A big piece of our work with standards is ensuring that they meet expectations for post-secondary readiness and that when mastered, students have an opportunity to be successful in post-secondary coursework without the need for remediation. So we do engage our post-secondary experts in all of our standards revision processes. We are always making sure that our standards are research-based, that they are factual, and that they are strong in content. And that is in part helped by our post-secondary experts that are in the, in the room, as well as other nationally recognized resources as well. We always engage employers in the process, recognizing that it's not just college readiness, but ensuring that the, uh, there is an intentional conversation around career readiness. A big piece of this too is not only communication with you, but how we consider and incorporate public input and feedback as appropriate. So ensuring that there's an open line of conversation between us and not only yourselves as the board, but also with all stakeholders, educators, parents, employers, really anyone that wants to provide feedback with that. So we do use a consistent process across all content area standards. I wanted to reference, and I have hard copies here as well. Again, over the last couple of years, we've worked to clarify the, the why behind standards. Because I think sometimes it exists, why do we need content area standards? So we went to the research, and we developed a reference guide that gives a little bit of background around the standards-based movement. It also clarifies our process for revising standards. It talks more specifically around our quality checklist, which you see on the right, which is also in the document. I think that's one thing that's really important to note, that we often have questions around the quality of our standards. But we feel really confident that our standards are research-based, and the quality criteria that we ensure are in the standards is backed by the research from educational psychology, human cognition, teaching and learning, et cetera. So we don't just put a set of standards before you without ensuring a very thoughtful and intentional quality check process. And the checklist, again, is in here as well as the research that talks about why those six criteria make up our quality checklist. We had a really good conversation in committee this morning about talking about the differences between standards versus curriculum. And maybe surprisingly, or not surprisingly, there's a lot of, maybe confusion might be the word around the difference between standards and curriculum. One thing that I think is important to call out at this point is that standards are not curriculum. And I think that's something that's really important to help not only our educators understand, but our administrators need to understand, and parents need to understand. We have definitions for standards, which I often say reflect the what we want students to know and be able to do. The curriculum is the how. So how do they, how does a, a professional in a classroom, in a, in a experience actually help students learn the content? And in a curriculum, you'll also see instructional materials, which might which might be textbooks, which might be online resources, which are determined locally. So I'll also say textbooks are not curriculum. And so we start to see the difference between how we talk about standards versus curriculum and then the instructional materials that are included in part of a locally-determined curriculum. To help us communicate, we have this graphic that we've shared often, and it's in the standards reference guide. The top two layers highlight what the State Board of Education approves, which are standards and indicators. And the pieces below that are determined by local school districts and classroom teachers. So whereas the board will approve standards and indicators for all content areas, the local districts actually determine the local instructional materials, the curriculum, getting down to lesson plans and specific strategies for individual students. Now, that doesn't mean that the department does not provide resources and support around instructional materials or curriculum. We see that it's a really strong commitment to equity, to ensuring that districts are putting the best possible resources in students' hands. So over the last year and a half, we've really worked to increase our presence around helping districts identify what's high-quality and ensuring alignment to standards, because that is just a huge equity piece that we really need to be unsure of. Do all kids have an opportunity to learn the high-quality instructional materials? And I think that's something that we're committed to. So again, standards are not curriculum. You all are not approving curriculum. You are approving the standards from which curriculum will be built. And again, we talked more about some additional information that may come forward down the road around those two pieces. Okay. I felt like I just went, phew, through all of that, and maybe got on my own soapbox around that. But we want to transition a little bit to some of the specifics around world language instruction in Nebraska. Before we talk about the world language standards, the question from the committee last month was, let's hear a little bit more about the context of language instruction in Nebraska. So in Rule 10, relative to the K-12 instructional program requirements, districts are required to offer two years' worth of language instruction. Language is not a requirement for high-school graduation in Rule 10. However, that does not mean that a local district cannot, a local district could require a language course as part of their own local high-school graduation requirements. But from the state perspective, it's included as an offering in our K-12 instructional program requirements.
The board was provided a set of materials. And if you look inside that set of materials, you'll see a page that says Language Learning in Nebraska.
It's in spark, I'll mention. It's the handout that's in there.
This provides for you the current statistics as far as how many students are taking each particular language. This information was compiled using the annual survey that is sent to districts and returned with information regarding specific courses that students are taking, how many students are taking that course, and what teacher and what endorsement that teacher has that are teaching that course. And you can see these are actual numbers. So seven represents the number of ASL students in Nebraska during the 2017-2018 school year. You'll notice, too, that in that same group of materials, the very final page is a glossary of terms. This provides some information regarding the kinds of world language programming that are available. There are programs that are FLEX or FLES, that refers to elementary-level world language programming. We also have middle-school programming, which is typically exploratory. The goal of such programming is not proficiency, but rather to introduce students to a language. And then at the high-school level, we have what is considered the traditional language study, generally where students are meant to acquire proficiency in the language for a dedicated purpose.
The other piece that we wanted to acknowledge were the post-secondary requirements around world languages or foreign language as the university references. There is not a consistent requirement across our post-secondary systems. For example, the University of Nebraska-Lincoln Four Admissions requires 16 units of academic courses. They require four English, four math, three social sciences, three natural sciences, and two world languages. But there's a little asterisk beside the requirement for world languages, and it says, "Some programs require four years." And that's just with a UNL. So again, as we're thinking about the number of courses, the opportunity for students to learn, teachers to actually facilitate learning and instruction in those areas, so they can proceed into post-secondary education, because there may be a requirement. All of these things are related, yet also at the post-secondary inconsistencies around the requirements even within a system. But I did want to reference that there are post-secondary requirements for language courses in our post-secondary system.
One particular format of world language instruction is dual-language programming. This does occur in Nebraska. And again, in the packet of supplementary materials, there is a paper that will explain to you more about dual-language instruction in the state of Nebraska. You'll notice that there are five areas within Nebraska that offer dual-language programming. And you'll notice the schools are listed specifically, so you can see the age level. If you would like to see the number of students enrolled at each program, it's on the other side of that page, in the bottom corner, of Languages Taught in Nebraska.
You, too.
Okay, looking at the Seal of Bilinguacy. The Seal of Bilinguacy is an initiative that started in 2010 in California, essentially to promote the idea that languages make students' career-ready. So this is something that is now offered in the state of Nebraska. It has been done through the Nebraska International Language Association. Students can apply for the Seal of Bilinguacy after they have shown that they achieved a certain level of proficiency through certain testing. It's their option to determine which test they would like to take. And then submitting those materials in their application to NILA, which then grants the seal.
So all of that hopefully sets just a little bit of context around the revision of Nebraska's World Language Standards, which ultimately you will be approving tentatively in September. As we think about those standards, and this information was shared with the committee last month, but in 2018, there was an advisory, a small group of, an advisory committee that Stephanie pulled together to really clarify what is our vision for world language instruction and setting the framework for standards. And so thinking about the development of standards that prepare students for college careers and civic life, that promote effective and culturally-appropriate communication in multiple contexts, we think about the importance of connecting language to and across other disciplines in authentic context. I think that word "authentic" is really important, because there is a big difference between a relevant context and an authentic context. But also allowing students to experience learning through reflection and continuing to take into consideration this idea of a growth mindset. So helping students see that they can learn a language, that everyone has that ability, it takes practice and it takes time, but really facilitating that mindset of the student. So as we set the framework for what we hope our standards do, these would be some guiding principles relative to those standards.
It's important to remember that the world language standards are going to be applicable to all languages and all levels, because both of those are district-level decisions. The five standards recognize and value our 1997 standards while requiring an advanced level of integrated language skills. You'll see an example of what those standards are going to look like. The increased specificity and focus across levels of proficiency will provide needed descriptors for classroom teachers.
I think this is what's really exciting as we think about this set of standards that will look somewhat different than other sets of standards, that become more grade-level standards. The goal is to think about a proficiency level and how we can help students advance across, starting off as a novice, clear through advanced proficiency. And this chart, I think, highlights if we want students to be, to reach an advanced proficiency level, that language learning can't just occur at the high-school level. It can't just occur in grades, starting in grade seven, clear through 12. So this chart really highlights the importance of looking at language proficiency across grade levels. And I think it's an important consideration for schools to ultimately identify what level of proficiency do they hope students leave with from their programs. And if their goal is that intermediate range, then programs nine through 12 are appropriate. But if they want students to reach an advanced level of proficiency based on their community, based on their parent needs, and based on their students, then they need to look at something more than high-school-based language courses. That being said, that idea of proficiency, and I'm giving just kind of a preview of the work that Stephanie has led with the writers, is the standards focus on proficiency. And so this is an example of what you'll see once the draft is available, is that we do have strands, like other content areas. And then you see the standard, which in this example says 1.1. But then what's different about this is that the indicators are organized by proficiency level, so starting from novice-low to advanced-high. And this is, I think, what's unique about the content area, but also what I feel like is exciting about this revision, is that it really focuses the conversation around proficiency levels. And it's applicable across all languages. So whether you're teaching Chinese or whether you're teaching Spanish, this would be a set of standards that would really focus on the proficiency piece with that. So as the draft comes out, again, it'll look a little bit different from grade-level-specific standards, because the focus is on proficiency and being applicable to all languages. As far as the timeline, you know, we're continuing to refine and edit throughout the spring. This process started, like I mentioned, with Stephanie's advisory committee last summer. We'll work to engage the public and employers throughout the spring. Final tweaking and editing is needed this summer. And our hope would be that we'll have a draft for you to review in August, with a vote anticipated in September. Again, Stephanie's been doing a great job in terms of really thinking about the implementation timeline, because that's part of our staff's task as well, not just get the standards done, but how do we provide support for implementation in schools? And so that'll be part of the information that we'll be able to share with you as we approach the summer. And folks have, or need more information, they're certainly welcome to reach out to us as needed.
Yeah, I just want to say, Stephanie, this graph that we put together here is outstanding.
Thank you.
And as I studied it first...
This graph is outstanding. And as I studied it further since our committee meeting this morning, and it was one of the questions we were asking, as I looked down in that kind of orangy box, gray, beige, rather, total students, grade seven through 12 in Nebraska, there's 156,808. But the total students, K through 12, is 361,605 out of all of the various languages you have. Now, I'm certain that a couple of these are more common than others on the languages. But I think that really speaks well of our districts to see that there is 200-plus thousand students that are below the grade level of seventh grade that are being immersed in some type of foreign world language. And so thank you for putting this together.
You're welcome.
It just really says a lot.
Thank you, Corey. I've heard out in the field in regards, if you will, the issue of seven years for the revision of a standard. And a lot are asking for a little bit longer time. Is that being considered?
The seven-year cycle is in statute relative to ELA Math, Science, and Social Studies and the other areas we've put around that. It used to be five, and then we moved to seven. We are keeping CTE at a five-year cycle, simply because we're trying to think about the nature of how those industries change. Some of those areas can change annually. But I think seven does give districts an opportunity to implement. And fingers crossed, as we move forward with standards revision, we've had some pretty major changes over the last several years to college and career-ready standards. It would be great, as we move forward to create consistency, that it's more updating and refining, not major revision.
Thank you.
So we're getting to a really good point, which would allow a district in that seven-year to be really thoughtful around implementation and allow us to collect data on the implementation in the district.
Very good. Thank you, Corey. Thank you, Lisa.
Seeing no further questions, we'll go on to the second item.
Microphone.
With that, the second item is action item 3.4.8B, which grants the commissioner the authority to contract with Education Measurement Consulting LLC. And Jeremy Hennecker is going to provide us with a little information on this action item.
Hello again.
Hi.
This one will be much shorter, I believe.
Thank you.
So this contract is with Bill Oddi. And he is going to help us with federal peer review for ALPA-21 and for our math program. So part of ESCEA requires that we submit, basically, confirmation of technical quality around our assessments. So our ALPA-21 is our English language proficiency test. And so that's due, actually, March 15th. So just around the corner. Luckily, that's part of a consortium. And so he's helping us with a lot of the logistics of getting that done. Previously, Bill was our psychometric consultant. Now that we have our psychometrician in-house, we no longer need his services for that. But he's still a prime player in the peer-review world, because he's a peer reviewer himself. And so he's just helping us make sure that we're crossing all those Ts and dotting all those Is as we work through the peer-review process for both math, for NSCAS math and alternate math. And that's due down the road, but also that ALPA-21 that's due here in a week. So.
Thank you for the shortened version.
Yeah, not a problem.
Any questions from the team? All right, seeing no questions, we are finished with all of this.
Thank you very much, Lisa. We'll now turn, if you will, Patricia Timm. Please report on the Policy Committee meeting, please.
The Policy Committee has one consent agenda item. This is to reaffirm Board Bylaw B1, Board Officers. This bylaw describes the duties of the Board President and Vice President. The Policy Committee completed their four-year review and recommended a non-substantial revision and will recommend that the full board reaffirm this bylaw tomorrow as a consent agenda item. The Policy Committee has five discussion items. The first being Board Position Statement, S1, Non-Discrimination and Equal Opportunity in Schools. This is set to expire, actually, yesterday, the 3rd of March, or the 6th of March. This position statement has been under discussion for some time. The current proposal incorporates the Board's resolution previously adopted about this topic to the existing language of S1, that being the resolution that we did on equity. In February, the committee agreed on further revisions in regard to supporting the Board's legislative priorities. And the Policy Committee is recommending that this policy, or this position statement, be reviewed by success and access because of all of the work that they are doing at the present time regarding equity and respect and dignity of all of the people who are a part of our system. And we're asking them to review and bring back their recommendations to us in April, and then we will report again. And we also have the Board Position Statement, S3, Reading and Writing. The Policy Committee recommends that this position statement, as written, is sunset and recommend that the Teaching and Learning Committee review and make recommendations on rewriting this position statement to align with our current NDE measures involving literacy. We have a four-year review of State Bylaw B4, which is Task Forces and Advisory Committees. The Policy Committee discussed this, and this will be recommended to be reaffirmed. We didn't have any revisions as yet. And this will be recommended to reaffirm by the full board in April. We have a four-year review of State Board Bylaw B17, Public Statements by Board Members. The Policy Committee discussed. And if no revisions are proposed by April, the committee will recommend that, again, we reaffirm this in April. And our last item was review of State Bylaw, State Board Bylaw B19, Computer Equipment, Internet Access, and Electronic Mail. We've discussed the contents of this bylaw, which was approved in 2018. We were just reviewing, because we've had some suggestions about our, the way we access things. And we will proceed to review this bylaw for its scheduled four-year, at its four-year review in 2022. So this was just a discussion, because we just put this one together. And next, we will start a four-year review in April on B13, Rule Development, and State Board... Board Policy P2, which is Line and Staff Relations. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Thank you very much, ma'am. Vice President Nichols, please report on the Legislative Committee meeting, please.
Thank you. The State Board Legislative Committee met earlier today, and we had some lively discussions on things that Brian led us through. And just so you know, while he'll be referencing, there is a document in Spark under our committee for those of you that are not on the committee to be able to review. And so, Brian, I'm going to let you take over to share the important pieces that we need to share.
Good afternoon. Brian Holstad, Deputy Commissioner. If you recall, a month ago on this date, the Board took up legislation and adopted positions on bills before the Legislature this session. In that meeting, I pointed out how this year's Legislature is unique for the calendar because it started on the last date possible in January under the Constitution, and how it will adjourn signee die on the 75th anniversary of D-Day in June. Today was day 38 for the Legislature, and I know everybody this morning was wondering, when will spring come in Nebraska? That will come when the Legislature completes its 45th Legislative Day on March 20th. So Hump Day is in the future for the Legislative Calendar in that regard. In Spark, you have the two-page document that attaches the boards, the bills the Board took positions on, and where those bills were as of close of business on Tuesday. I would note, guess what? Some of those have changed just a little bit in the fact that LB160 is on final reading now. It says Select File. That's because it moved on Wednesday morning. We did not, the Governor did not report to the Legislature before it adjourned today, whether he signed LB115 and LB122. We may not know until next Tuesday because the Legislature isn't back in then. As to whether the Governor signed those, if he doesn't sign them, they become law, but he has generally taken all five days that's permitted before he reports back to the Legislature. There are a number of bills that are going to be having hearings coming up in March. The Commissioner kind of briefed both the Budget and Finance Committee and the Legislative Committee that we have our hearing before the Appropriations Committee on Tuesday, March 19th. Several of the bills that you took positions supporting that are actually funding issues for the Department of Health and Human Services, we anticipate those will have hearings on Tuesday, March 27th. So we will be signaling our support for those bills in that regard. And this morning, LB399, that's now on Select File. The Legislature spent about an hour this morning on Select File debate, and Senator Chambers and some other senators made it known they intend to make the Legislature take all the time it's required on Select File before that bill may advance to final reading. There's some cleanup amendments that have been posted, so we're going to be monitoring that as we go forward. But at the moment, that's largely where the Legislature is and where we are. On February 7th, you had a discussion about a bill that you decided not to take a position on, and I think I'll turn it back over to the Chair of the Committee of what the Committee has discussed and found out since that time on LB241, so.
Yes, we did have some enlightening conversations since February 7th regarding Senator Bowles. Thank you. I'm getting worse than Lisa now. We did have a lively discussion on Senator Bowles's LB241, the mentoring bill. We've done a lot of discussion on it in our weekly legislative calls regarding it and whatnot, and again today in committee. And the Committee tomorrow will recommend that the State Board of Education support LB241 with an amendment that provides that funding for the 2020-21 school year be available for NDE to plan for implementation of teacher mentoring programs that in the 2021-2022 school year, school districts can apply to NDE for funding to carry out teacher mentoring in school districts. That ends my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Vice President Nichols. Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, Patricia Timm, please report on the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee meeting.
We have not met. We will meet tomorrow morning.
Eight o'clock, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Patsy Coe-Johns, please report on the AQuest Student Success and Access Domain Committee meeting.
The Student Success and Access Domain Committee met with one discussion item and five action items. And the discussion item, we're bringing back, we've discussed it before, and so we're bringing new information to you about the equity lens that we've discussed over the last couple of months. So we have some internal and external feedback that's come back to us. I kind of want you to know about that. Our Board members, several of them have brought back information to us about responses to the equity lens as they had discussions with administrators and other people across the state. And individual Board members gave me reactions to the rough draft of a equity lens that we shared with them last month. We were advised by you and by, I was advised by my committee that we should seek out opinions from other educational groups such as the Administrators Association, School Board Association, STANS, NSCA, NSAA, NERC. We also wanted to reference, before we began putting together our own equity lens, the Commissioner's, a couple of his speeches, his speech that he did when he announced that this is the year that we champion equity, and one that he gave at the State Capitol with a group of other leaders from some of these organizations. Because we'd like to see the language aligned, okay? So that we're not just pulling language from other places. If it's really going to be in Nebraska, we want to take some of your language and use it. And then, as I understand it, the Policy Committee is putting together also a kind of a companion policy that it seems apropos and maybe, you know, like one of those happy accidents that they're side by side. And so we would also like to study what they've been doing and take a look at what they're doing, and John came to me with that, and I also have some of that there. So we'll be looking at that. As I was trying to contact some of these people, I realized that some of these people might be busy in the Legislature, and so I was having some difficulty getting a hold of them or getting callbacks. And so I sat down about 1:00 in the morning and slammed out a letter to them, and I gave that to my committee. Those of you who have been, had your grammar, your punctuation corrected by me, I humbled myself and said, "Please, please take a look at this," and I am fully aware that it's not up to standards. Please add your ideas, corrections, et cetera." So they'll be sending those back to me in the next few days so that I can then send those out to those organizations and leaders that you've recommended that we talk to about this equity lens. I think one of the most important things that came out of this meeting to me is, this is really, really important, and it's not only important for the School Board. I think we'll begin the journey, and maybe the journey will end across the whole state. And so, no rushes, no hurry, mates. We want to do it, we want to do it right so that it lasts a very, very long time. And I use myself as an example. I'd be the first to admit that I made equity mistakes as a teacher, and I look back at them and think, "How did I not know that?" And had I had a lens to look through and asked myself some very pertinent questions, perhaps I wouldn't have made those mistakes that may have affected the lives of students across the state. So we're going to go slowly, and we're going to keep reporting to you until we get it just right. Any questions about that? Okay, moving along to our action items. Point three, or 3.5B, action item, to grant the Commissioner the authority to amend the existing contract, and it's with ESU14, the Nebraska Center for the Education of Children Who Are Blind or Visually Impaired. The Committee received information from staff members concerning this amendment to funding for the Nebraska Center for the Education of Children Who Are Blind or Visually Impaired, and the Committee recommends that we approve this item tomorrow. I'll take any questions or ideas. 3.5C, action item, grant the Commissioner the authority to approve two contracts with Easter Seals Nebraska. Easter Seals will continue, will conduct the Nebraska Empowerment Youth Camp and the Inspiring Change Makers Leadership Training Programs. The item to grant authority for two contracts to one entity that will total over $50,000, and that's why it was brought to us. And the Committee recommends that we approve this item as well, this action item tomorrow. 3.5D, action item, grant the Commissioner the authority to approve the two contracts with Educational Service Unit 16, ESU16, for the Summer Internship Program, Summer Work Education and Employment Program. SWEAP is the acronym for it. This item is also funding for pre-employment, transition services, and activities. Again, the two contracts to one entity that will total over $50,000 has to be brought forward to us, similar to the previous item because it's more than that $50,000. The Committee recommends that we approve this item, and also ask if you have any questions about that. The next item is 3.5E, and it's an action item that grants the Commissioner authority to approve cooperative agreement for NEMTSS, Regional Facilitators, with ESU3, ESU10, and ESU13. The Commissioner had a discussion with the staff regarding the state MTSS supports as it relates to this item for cooperative agreements with educational service units. The Committee has asked staff to share more information on MTSS with us and the connection to these contracts. So Amy Rong will come forward.
It's me, and I calm down. So this cooperative agreement, there's three cooperative agreements, actually, one with ESU3, ESU10, and ESU13. Our plan is to split the state into three and provide regional support around MTSS. Currently, we do that through an implementation support team that has people from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, a Federal Technical Assistance Center, and NDE consultants that comprise themselves of the implementation support team. We're looking to branch out and provide even additional supports around training, facilitation, data analysis, and components to help support the ESUs and districts in those three regions with the intent to even expand more as we move into MTSS even further, and hopefully in the next year, provide five regional support people. But for now, we're starting with three, and we'll see how that goes. So that is the intent of this cooperative agreement, which is kind of like a grant, but we call it something different because of federal regulations.
And I'm going to steal your quote because I loved it, and it certainly fits in with everything I believe. Amy, you said that MTSS means equity and education for all students, and...
I did say that.
Yes, she did say that. So very smart. You are a very smart person. And I know that because I was your teacher, so I know that. Okay, so the Committee recommends that we approve this item, and are there any questions for Amy? Thank you very much. 3.5F, action item, grant the Commissioner the authority to amend the current 2018-19 contracts for the four regional programs for deafness and hard of hearing. The Board previously approved these contracts. The Committee received information regarding the amended amounts and recommends that the Board approve this item tomorrow. Are there any questions? All right. This concludes the Student Success and Access Committee report.
Thank you, Patsy. Thank you very much, ma'am. I will report on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Could I have Bryce Wilson and Shane Rhine, please, come on up? My first is the discussion item, it's the Information on Legislature Appropriations Committee hearing on the Department of Education's biennial budget request. Could we have a brief?
I'll share just briefly. Actually, Brian hit on a few of those points. I did try to talk to the Legislative Committee again today about March 19th being the hearing date, and also talked to the Finance Committee kind of about some of the details of our budget. Obviously, the budget we submitted last September is the budget that's still in front of the Legislature at this moment in time. Obviously, as the landscape continues to be shaped around the legislative session, we wouldn't anticipate that we get every, everything. I think a couple items that appear, kind of equity lens perspectives, I know that there's interest in increasing the funding possibly for the contract around the Center for the Blind and Visually, or Center for the Education of the Blind and Visually Impaired, that's actually ESU4, will come in and present at our hearing around that front. Certainly, the notion around coordinated school health is a topic I expect others to come testify in supportive around our budget. There's several other things that we feel are important there that I wouldn't necessarily expect we'll get all of, but I want to give you a little update, and hopefully you can watch on March 19th, at least by video. And again, it's, we're trying to lead in a lot of different ways. I might just highlight one more thing because I know I've talked to the Legislative Committee. I've submitted a couple of letters of support for the, so that Nebraska Indian Affairs Commission, for instance, generally just supporting their activity. We're hoping to be able to do a bit of a summit work, kind of build hopefully this summer, but I believe Judy Goshkabosh is going to ask about additional funding for that, and I wanted to indicate our general support for their partnership and their work. And then also did something similar for the Latino-American Commission, submitting a letter of support. They have picked up a lot of the leadership around the Hispanic-Latino Student Summit, and really took the leadership on that. We didn't lose funding, we had federal funds that were changed that could no longer be used to support that, and so I wanted to indicate our support for their efforts on that. So there's a lot of different things happening in the appropriations world, but that's essentially what we talked about. They'll give you context of our audit, but there's a lot of context happening around school finance and other things, too, as we go forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much, sir. Bryce, you want to start us off with the audit?
Sure. So you're going to have an action item tomorrow to accept the 2018 CAFER audit, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Audit. Basically, it's the audit the state auditors go through, the whole entire state, all of the agencies get audited, and they roll that all together to create the state's financial reports. We have, it's an annual audit that we go through, so we have this fun every year. We had three findings that were noted on the report, all of which I would consider to be pretty minor findings. No, there were no misappropriation of assets, no kinds of issues around money being used incorrectly or anything like that. There are process items where the first one was primarily just financial, for the financial report, information was reported in their incorrect year. So out of the 330 million of federal reported, federal funds reported, there's about four and a half million that were recorded in the incorrect year is basically what that finding's saying, all of which we were aware of, and let DAS know, or Department of Administrative Services, know that that needed... and let DAS know, or Department of Administrative Services, know that that needed to be moved over. It's just that the accounting system that we have did not allow us to make those corrections, so we had, it had to become a manual correction, which was all done. So there was nothing that actually was, in the end, done incorrectly. It just had to be fixed because there was a mistake on the front end. And then the other two findings were around technology issues. One was, access was allowed to a couple of different programs, the GMS system and the CNP system, which is the Child Nutrition Program System, for users that had terminated or shouldn't have had access anymore. Nobody did access anything. So again, nothing, no, but no information was accessed or no changes were made that shouldn't have been done. Additionally, there, they wouldn't have actually have been able to send state money out because they didn't have access to the accounting system. So they could have got into some, a couple of systems potentially, but we've addressed those, those issues. We've created new control forms where access is granted and terminated with supervisor approval to address that and make sure that doesn't happen again. And then the last one was just that we needed to develop an information technology risk assessment plan. That has been under, it's been in, in work for a while now. We're getting very, very close to the end product. Our project management team has been leading that work and should have some, we'll have it. We've said in our response to that finding, we'll have it done by June 30th, but I think likely we'll be done with that before that time and, and start implementing that plan to make sure that all of our, all of our technology systems are reviewed and make sure that we don't have any holes where things can happen that we don't want to happen, so.
Thank you, Bryce. And did you also want to introduce Shane's replacement?
Yes. So as you're aware, Shane, Shane's leaving us. And Jen Udomark, who has been our State Aid Director and done just an absolutely wonderful job there, leading that part of our finance team over there, is going to step into Shane's role as the Administrator for Financial Services. So you'll get to know, and the budget work as well. So you will get to know Jen as well. She'll be up in front of you guys a little bit more, but she will do a fantastic job as she does on everything, so.
Look forward to it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Dr. Wise, please report on the Strategic Planning, Performance and Improvement Committee meeting.
I'm only going to take about 30 minutes to report. Unless there is conversation. In your, in Spark, you have two documents. I'm going to talk briefly about the first one, and that is for action item for tomorrow during our business meeting. And it is the Strategic Planning Recommendations. It's a one-page document with five general recommendations and action steps relating to those recommendations. And that will be, it was supported by the Committee, and it will be in front of you tomorrow for adoption. And thank you, everybody who put input into that over the last month. It has been revised a little bit since you saw it last month. The next document that you have is a draft working document that is an implementation plan. This document will not be adopted. This is for your information to help see kind of the strategies, timelines, and responsibilities for the implementation of the recommendations and action steps. So the one-page recommendations will be up for adoption in action tomorrow. The other document is an implementation plan, and this is just a working guide for you to get a sense of the work and the timeframe for the work going forward for the implementation of the Strategic Planning Recommendations. Are there any questions? Oh, then it won't take 30 minutes. Thank you.
We'll move on. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wise. We'll move on to reports, dates, and discussion items. Do you have anything under this? I see nothing from the Commissioner. Okay. Thank you for submitting your monthly report. Board members' reports are linked in Spark, and I encourage you to review.
Did you have something? I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I just have my monthly reports right here.
I'll continue on. The Board member reports are linked in Spark, and I encourage you to review each member's reports. And you're highly encouraged to go ahead and email your, your Word documents to Ryan Forrester just prior to the meeting, and he'll attach them in Spark accordingly. Also, in regards to quarterly discussion or meeting participation, we have rescheduled that for tomorrow afternoon during our business meeting.
Tomorrow after, not afternoon. We hope. Give it now in the day, or you never know.
What the heck. So ahead of the postpone, members will share briefly about one event or activity they participate, participated in within the last three months. Tomorrow, we will vote on requests to approve attendance at meetings that took place in the past and were not previously approved. There are six meeting approval requests as listed on our agenda. Also, the requests for future meeting attendance, travel from Board members are linked in the Spark meetings. Tomorrow, we approve the Board request for meeting attendance. Also, monthly Board Travel Expense Report is attached in the Spark meetings for your review. And lastly, the regularly scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will convene tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. in this room. Thank you very much. We are, we are adjourned.